Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to the work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman on Tuesday, October the 10th. Before I ask for citizen comments, if there are any, and I don't have any speakers cards, so I assume there's not, I want to remind everyone in the audience tonight and also in the TV audience that we do have a ward Alderman election going on, and early voting will continue until October the 19th, so it's a good opportunity to get out and vote. It's an important thing to place your vote for your ward Alderman. We always like to say that the closest government is the closest government is the closest government. How do we say that? The best government is the government closest to the people.
Fool me once.
So whatever that was, I just messed it up, but y'all get the idea, don't you?
See, I can't get fooled again.
Eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday, and Saturday eight to twelve. Sound like a candidate there, almost. So with that said, no citizen comments that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to overview of the quarterly development activity, value of construction, and status update on the city's building inspection analysis, and we're glad to welcome Lynn and Vernon to the podium.
Hi, thanks for having me again. On the development activity report, I am showing you 2017 year-to-date, the first three quarters through September 30th, and I was interested to see how this report compares to last year, since we had such a strong year last year compared year-to-date. So I just wanted to share a couple of my observations with you. And first of all, we had almost an identical amount of residential building permits this year, 1,579, and last year at this time, we had 1,576. For our additional fees received, which includes our plan review fees, road impact fees, facilities, taxes, et cetera, this year we've collected $10.2 million, and last year, just over $10 million. So again, we're very close. But the most exciting part, since last year, we finished out at, right at, three-quarters of a billion dollars in investment in our community based on the construction valuation. At this time, last year, we were at $546,420,000. This year, we're at $546,570,000. So it's going to be a very interesting last quarter to see where we end up for the year. Does anybody have any questions on this report? And the other item that we wanted to bring to your attention and discuss is building inspections completed by the Building and Neighborhood Services Department. I've compiled these statistics and noted a concerning trend in a decline in the inspection pass rates over the past five years. Pretty much every year, it's been steadily declining. Right now, we have probably right around a 30 percent failure rate of building inspections, which means that we have an additional amount of re-inspections. Where that concerns us is, of course, it's reducing our level of service. It's impacting us, and we're concerned that we may not be able to continue with our next day inspections, which will particularly impact our strong-performing contractors. We have some that are achieving over a 90 percent pass rate, but the range does go down to some contractors with a 40 percent pass rate. So what we've been doing is meeting with the contractors over the past several months to see what we can do to help them to improve and get their suggestions. So I just wanted to let you know, and we will probably be coming back at some point to hopefully offer some solutions to this issue.
What is their response? When you say, "What can we do?", what can they do?
Well, and we're asking that as well. They're having a lot of workforce availability issues because the economy is so strong and building is so strong right now, they really have difficulty hiring and then keeping good staff.
The companies are building.
Correct.
Is there a way we can track why these are? Can we add some kind of category that would code something? Because it would be interesting to see if it, was it a new item that caused them not to pass?
Right.
Was it they weren't at the finish level that they should have been to ask for the inspection?
That's often the case.
Or some categories that would help hone in a little bit?
Yes, yes. We are taking a look at that, and hopefully we'll have some information on that. There are so many different types of inspections, but when we do see patterns where there's a strong area where they're always failing, we definitely, BNS can elaborate a bit on that because they are holding special information sessions, et cetera, on certain things that need improvement.
Are they asking for an inspection in advance, thinking the work will be completed, and then when our inspector's there, it hadn't been completed yet?
Yes, that's often the case.
Is that often the case?
Yes.
There should be a way for us to deal with that.
And that's why, as Lynn mentioned, we've been taking time to meet with contractors, both that have a higher success rate and those that have the lower, to see what type of service do you need from us, because it is a workforce issue. So the pridemanship of what craftsmen were a year ago doesn't exist as much today. But as, one thing that, as you alluded to, Alderman Skinner, is that the general contractors don't want to be responsible for the subcontractors they're hiring, which in some communities, the general contractors required to request the inspections to ensure the work has been done and coordinated. That's one of the options that has been raised in our meetings with them. And if a general contractor is responsible, then he can ensure that the work's done when it's supposed to be, because sometimes a plumber may need the general contractor to perform some of their work, as well as the electrical and heating contractor before they request an inspection. But again, as Lynn mentioned, our concern is the level of service. In Franklin, we do have high development expectations and standards, and people are making a good investment, both residential property owners as well as our businesses in this community. We strive to provide predictable services and timely services. That's, I believe, sets us apart from other communities. And with this growing trend, we've got to try to find some way to improve upon it.
Okay, but essentially, we're getting the same fee from the people that, from the contractors that aren't requiring multiple re-inspections. But then there's another group that is requiring that. Is there some way that financially, we can? We're spending more staff time with those people.
When you say required, you mean required from who?
Required from?
If they're...
The developer or required from the city? Clarify that.
No, the developer. If we're having to make multiple inspections because they're not ready?
Right.
They're wasting our inspectors' time.
Right, and those are things that, we're looking at other communities, too, and see what they do. A re-inspection fee is an option. Raising it is elevated in the discussions we have. But the purpose of our discussion today is just to let you know, we're looking at it. We're not, we don't have any solutions to offer, and it's just to let Lynn, you know, Lynn wanted to share this information that we're tracking. And it's important to also understand, as we continue to go forward, it impacts our water management department, our street department inspectors, as well as our stormwater inspectors that work on construction sites. And the last thing I'd like to leave you with here, too, is what's equally alarming. In residential is where we see a higher failure rate. In residential, the homes that are being built are much the same, and they might have a different facade, but the floor plan is pretty much the same. And that's a concern that we're going to try to address going forward. But this is just informational at this time, and in the months ahead, we'll be coming back to you.
Yes, one of your questions was, what have we done when contractors are attempting to anticipate whether or not they're going to be complete in order to call in their inspections? And what we've done with our online inspection system is, they can request an inspection all the way up to 5:30 of that same day. So they can wake up in the morning, figure out if their work is done, you know, they don't have to try to time it or anticipate anything, because literally 30 minutes later, when our senior inspectors get there and start laying out the work for the day, they're going to pick up those inspections. So we've made it to where there's no need for them to try to anticipate and fail because they're calling in inspections too early.
The scheduling shouldn't be a driver.
It's not a driver. We've taken that off the table.
Yeah, we are very responsive in getting those scheduled and a pretty immediate turnaround for folks.
Right.
Okay. So what's their explanation when, I'm sure you've told contractors that?
Well, sure. And we've gotten, you know, over 80 percent of the contractors utilizing our online system, whether or not they're going to get up at 5:30 or do that, that's, you know, those behavior patterns are still, are still there, but we've changed the way we do business.
Comment on the previous slide. Whenever we, whenever it says total estimated evaluation of building permits, 546 million. When we looked at some of the numbers at one of the previous meetings, we looked at property values in the city at three and a half, I think it was three and a half billion dollars. But with the new appraisals, it was, I think it was 4.6 billion.
We're right, yeah, just below 5 billion in assessed valuation. So that's after you've reduced the appraised value, 25 percent for residential, 40 percent for commercial or non-residential, and we saw about a 5 percent growth, 5.1 percent growth, I think, between last year and this year, which is, was very strong. And that's this kind of permitted development hitting the tax rolls. So this is really probably last year's permitted development hitting the tax rolls for this year, and what we're talking about now, we'll probably see a year from now in terms of our assessed valuation and property tax base.
But the point being, it's a tremendous growth, amount of growth, whether it's new appraisals or whatever. There's a tremendous amount of growth in the city, and half a billion dollars in building permits is part of that.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions?
My question was just how, what the percentage was from commercial versus residential, and you're saying it's more residential, correct, Chris?
The percentages come out to be about the same, as far as the pass rates go.
Really? Commercial? Really? I would not expect that.
But there are some larger neighborhoods that have the developer and builder in which it's an alarming figure.
So it's more consistent, maybe, in a neighborhood, the fail rate?
Yeah. Well, we're tracking this by contractor, so we can pull up each, any contractor doing work in the city and show their pass fail rate. Whether they're building, electrical, plumbing, heating, or mechanical.
So then we need to go and, yeah, if that continues, I would be one for saying we need a re-inspection fee for sure.
And enough to cover the cost.
Yeah, I would definitely support that if that's consistently going to stay that way.
Okay, we'll move on. We'll go to item two, which is presentation of a new high deductible health plan option for employees, including a health savings account for fiscal year 2019.
So this may seem early. We're bringing members of our HR team up to talk to you about this, but this is an additional option that we would like to add for our employees in terms of health insurance, and Kevin and Jake from our consulting team will walk you through what that means to us. We're trying to get the information out now because people have opportunity to sign up for the flexible spending accounts, and these choices may affect some of the decisions people make. So we're trying to let them know of these additional options now, let you know, and get the word out. So that's what tonight's about, to walk through that with you. But again, it's an option in addition to what we've been providing from an insurance standpoint, so, Kevin?
All right. I'll pick it up from there. And with me is Jake Davis. He's our benefits consultant. I'm sure you recognize him. He's with Cowen, which is also under Hub International. And what we're, as Eric said, what we're trying to do, and it sounds like we're coming early because the option won't really come into effect until July, but because we have a flexible spending account now, if we don't advise people that we're going to have a second option that'll include a high deductible plan as an HSA, if someone was not aware now and they were to enroll for an FSA, they couldn't stop mid-year when the HSA is available, and you can't go from an FSA to an HSA in the same year. So let me pull it back and tell you what we're trying to do. What we want to do here is, currently, the city of Franklin has had option one and option two with very little difference. Option one has a little higher premium and less of a, less of a deductible. Option two has a slightly, slightly higher deductible, slightly lower premium, make sure I said that correctly. But it's not officially a high deductible health plan, and until you have a high deductible health plan, you can't have HSA. So we're going to go to option two, which will have, which, and we don't have the numbers to tell you now, we just want to tell you now that we're going to go this way. But once we have the high deductible health plan, that will mean option two, which was totally different from option one, meaning that the premium will be less, the deductible, the risk on that person would be higher. But it's a great plan for somebody who doesn't want to spend, why spend the money in a premium level when if you don't go to the doctor, you get to keep that money in your pocket? So that's what we're going towards. So the difference is, lower premium, higher deductible, you can't have an, and with that, you can have an HSA. What the HSA is, is an account in which the person can put pre-tax dollars in at every pay period, so they can increase their, it's a balance on a credit card. The city of Franklin will also have, contribute some money to that. We don't know exactly what that'll be yet. What that does is it enables people to spend with their, this debit card. It can purchase healthcare items, they can take care of doctor's visits with this card. Immediately, there's money on it. This money doesn't go away. This money is theirs forever. This year, next year, it just keeps building up.
So we're a flexible spending account, the dollars the employee puts in, they have to use in that calendar year. The health savings account are dollars, combination of dollars the city would put in on their behalf, and that they could choose to put in additional dollars, the employee can contribute. And they stay with the employee, they roll over year to year, and so they can accumulate over time, and so it's a nice benefit. It's a different way to approach it. It's a little more of a consumer-based approach to healthcare and health services, and so that's, it really is differentiated from what we've provided before. So it's fairly common benefit structure that you see in a lot of private industry, and one we'd like to at least open up as an option for our team members. So we can give you a little more explanation as we go through it, but...
Is the amount controlled by the IRS that you can put into the HSA?
There's a cap, yeah.
There's a cap.
There's a cap each year the IRS sets for.
Wonderful.
Well, good. I think that's the purpose of today, was to let you know, that's what we're going to do. We're putting, telling you, and we're going to be telling our employees, because if I wasn't clear, the open enrollment for voluntary benefits and FSA starts October 15th. So people who would want to get an FSA need to know that there's going to be an HSA available later, because you can't just cut the FSA and go to the HSA.
Do we know what the deductible?
That's part of the structure we're going to have to determine as we go through this. There's some options there, and the trade-offs, the higher the out-of-pocket potential is, the lower the premium is. So there's some trade-off there, and we have to look at what we're able to put in as the city contribution into that HSA. So there's more specifics that we need to, need to work out as we put the benefit structure together, and that's probably something we'll have around the first of the year and start to communicate that out to our employees from there.
Now, this will still be self-funded by the city?
Yeah, it's all part of our self-funded program. It's just another option. So the program that people, most people use today will still be available to them. This is just a, an additional option.
Will there be opportunities with each of the departments and employees to explain this once we get these numbers?
Yeah, we're going to need to go through and do a pretty significant educational program, because it's significantly different in its structure, has some upside, but you're also assuming a little more risk in some of the out-of-pocket costs, and so there's some trade-offs there, and we'll just need to go out and make sure people are fully informed about those differences.
Do we know yet how much of the SAA could cover the deductible? Is there any idea about?
We, no.
That's part of what we'll have to put in terms of the structure.
We can determine how much to put in the HSA, and we'll determine how much deductible is, and try to keep it at a reasonable level, right? You don't want to fund the entire deductible, but enough to make people want to go to that plan if they desire to.
Is the desire to get as many people on that as possible, or it just, I mean, what if you just get 20 people? I mean, is the goal to try to get as many people in option three?
It'll be option two.
Okay, option two will be modified for this.
Right, so the option two that you're familiar with will be gone. This will be option two. And the answer is, we don't anticipate that there'll be an incredible amount of people jumping on it initially, but to answer your question, yes, and I don't want to go too deep and say incredible savings, but in theory, down the road, you would have savings if more people were on the option two.
More people, okay. And there are only 30 people in option two today, so we want to, we want to make it more attractive to where we think there should be more than 5 percent.
And also make it more differentiated, because they are pretty similar to each other. One and two are not that much different. If we create one that is significantly different and gives people the opportunity to really save more in what they have to contribute in premium in their paycheck every, every two weeks, that may be more attractive to some folks in terms of how they manage those costs. It's a, just a different structure, and it's different enough that it, it might be more attractive to at least some of our, some of our employees.
And this, in this high deductible, will they still, will things like screening, will those still be charged against the deductible? Or will there be free screening?
The same services that are covered at 100 percent today will still be covered at 100 percent. That is governed by the ACA, right? So no matter what your plan design is, your once-a-year screenings, well-woman, colonoscopies at certain ages, immunization for children, those will still be covered at 100 percent.
Does this qualify for health, dental, the whole shebang? The HSA, is it for all services?
Yes, it's the same services that an FSA covers, which is why you can't be in both. So think of prescriptions, office visits, LASIK braces, you know, that sort of thing, the HSA can be used for.
Anybody else?
And last question. When would they need to start to think about signing up? Because it can't change till July 1st of next year.
Right, we think, they need to start thinking about it now, so if they're going to do the FSA, they might say, "No, I'm going to hold off near the HSA." But in terms of when do they actually have to commit, that wouldn't be until, was it May?
I would think after the first of the year, we'll go out and start the education process. It'll take some time, so we'll need to literally go department by department and brief everybody about this, this different option, and walk through what a health savings account is. The very questions you're asking, we'll need to make sure we can answer for folks. We'll have a more specific structure in mind, in place by that point. But to start this rolling, we wanted to inform you, get the word out. We'll share at least this general information with our employee team here shortly after this discussion.
I have a question. It's kind of out there, but so, as, I mean, obviously, we're very blessed to have great insurance, thank you, but typically, that's done because of the size of the employees that we have on the policy for, for the vendor. If it gets so lopsided that so many more people go towards the savings as opposed to what we've been accustomed to, will that affect our premiums, because we don't have as many people as a whole being rated on the existing plan? I'm trying not to use vendor names, because...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure. Did you want to take that one? Because I think his answer...
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
If the pendulum swings so far this way...
If people really go towards this plan, how would that change?
To the savings, for those of us who kind of don't want to roll that dice, is it going to make our premiums go up because we have more people over here than we used to as a whole?
In theory...
Do you like those graphics?
No, because the savings will be offset by the savings in claims as well, right? So that's the, you know, there may be a little less in premiums, but, you know, the thought behind the high deductible, that used to be called consumerism plans, is it puts the, kind of puts the employee in charge of how they spend their money. The example we talked about several times is, you know, an MRI can range anywhere from $900 to $3,000. If it's your money, you're going to care which one it is.
Well, typically, you get a discount if you pay for it in cash when you're there.
Exactly. So, I mean, I'm personally in an HSA. I have paid cash and gotten a couple hundred dollars off of different things because I paid cash upfront. So it puts you in charge of that. You know, you will see people find generics instead of brand names because it's your money.
Right, but I guess that's still not answering my question. My question is, if so many people go towards the new plan, and we have less people enrolled in what we know, will it make the old way of things go up because we don't have as many people to...
But the same number of people will be enrolled overall.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying. It really shouldn't. We're essentially, there's a little bit of difference in how we're dividing up some of the costs, and we're providing this mechanism through which people can manage that cost and use the HSA to help pay for those additional costs that might come their way that they don't have.
If I were 25, I'd be like, "Yeah," but, I mean, so...
Yeah, there will still be 600 people enrolled in the plan total, right? It's just right now, instead of 600...
It's under the same umbrella.
Instead of 570 in one and 30 in another, we'd love for it to be 500 in one and 100 in the other.
And we're still a self-insured structure. We have an attachment point if costs on a specific member or element goes above that, then there's an attachment point where insurance comes in and helps and pays the rest of that. That will still exist, and this will still exist for people if they have a large cost item. They may have more upfront, out-of-pocket, but after that, the insurance kicks in, they'll have the coverage they need. So it really provides that same, if there's a high exposure cost, that's, coverage is still there for people.
And wasn't there a guinea pig plan that was put into place about a year ago for a couple of y'all that tried this out?
Well, we did one, we did a version with rolling retirement savings into a health savings as an option for folks. That has some of the same things that the HSA has in that it can stay with you, it can roll on, it actually can go to your descendants even, so that was something we did as an element for retirement and when people essentially cash out some of their time at the end when they retire.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, good job. Next is liquor license issuance for Franklin wine and spirits. Any question about that one? Then we'll move on to item four, which is consideration of resolution 2017-61, being titled resolution approving a development plan for Jordan Road PUD subdivision with one modification of standards for cul-de-sac length greater than 500 feet for the property located east of Mac Hatcher Parkway, north of Liberty Pike, 622 Jordan Road.
So this is a development plan for 10 single-family homes. It does need...
It does meet in the principles of Envision Franklin. They are asking for one modification of standard for an increase in the cul-de-sac length.
Any questions? Do you have a comment?
Yes, my name is Greg Gamble representing the applicant and I just have one quick thing to add. When we presented this plan at the workshop, we showed the cul-de-sac here with ten lots. After the workshop, after the neighborhood meeting, we met with this neighbor.
That water thing. I think we're moving over towards Brad a little bit.
Sure. We met with the neighbor who lives in this house right here. You can see in this photograph that this cul-de-sac would be in his backyard. And we worked with him, worked with staff on reducing the length of this cul-de-sac. Now, it's still longer than five hundred feet, but it's about a hundred feet shorter. And we are committed to installing a landscape edge along here that would be evergreen so that it really creates more privacy for this one particular neighbor. It's a little bit of a unique situation and we're going to address that in a, in a unique way.
Alden Peterson.
That, I, I'm glad to hear, you know, that that, that seems to be taken care of on that. The other thing was.
Can you pull that microphone up just a little bit, Alden?
It needs to be right here.
Alden Martin, can't hear you.
Okay. The other thing was that there was concern about water coming from this to some of the neighboring areas. What about that?
Correct. There is a ridge line that basically runs down the road and the water currently sheet flows off toward Pageant Court. We're leaving an open space area in here behind lots one through six that will allow us to create a swale because all stormwater elements have to be in an open space lot, which this will be, and we're going to redirect it back toward Jordan Road so we get it into this infrastructure instead. So we're, we're solving an issue that's occurring right now and addressed.
Thank you.
So would their property be on this side of the swell and that would be common?
The lots one through six would own up to about where it's colored and anything where the trees are in green here would be an open space lot.
Okay.
Left in preservation.
Alden Berger.
Can you show us that again? And where are you stubbing out that road, Greg? Where's the, right there?
Yeah, this stub out will be approximately right here.
So in the future, if that opens up, then that.
Continue back to Jordan.
Modification of standards actually wouldn't be needed because you would have built it to what it's supposed to be anyway, right?
Correct. This property could develop in the future at the set curb cut. It should be located about right here and then this modification of standards would not be necessary.
Yeah, so, so if that property gets sold, which it possibly could in the near future. So I just want to make sure that that was done. And I, I did go and walk that property about a week ago and there's quite a bit of greenery there. It's hard to even see into that.
There is, a lot of screening.
Already, it's, I mean, it's tall. It's very high.
It is and.
So I, I didn't see that, you know, even though you're putting more screening in.
Correct. A lot of the material that's long here is deciduous. So the evergreen is going to.
That's true, some of them were. That's true.
Yeah, it really needs to be protected too all year. So that's what we're doing.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, item number five. Resolution to be entitled resolution approving revised development plan for Galleria Commercial Complex PUD subdivision revision two with one modification of standard parking reduction with property located south of Moore's Lane and east of Galleria Boulevard, the McDonald's Restaurant site.
And this was the one that we talked about at the joint work session. This is a McDonald's on Cole Springs, or excuse me, on Moore's Lane. They're looking to reduce their parking count. And they've submitted a traffic study with that regard.
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Alden Berger.
And I've been involved in that and actually the way that place services people, they have a high volume of drive-throughs more so. And I think that reduction in parking will work out fine for them. That'll be, I think that'll be fine.
Ready to move on? Item six, consideration initiating the annexation process and draft plan of services resolution twenty seventeen sixty for the annexation of forty-one oh seven to forty-one fifteen Clovercroft Road.
So this property is contiguous to the city limits along the north and west side of the property line. The property is boarded to the north by the McKay's Mill subdivision. The applicant has a desire to develop the property as a single family residential, which is supported by Envision Franklin.
How many, how many, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, you go ahead, Alden Martin.
How many?
I'm good with you talking of, speaking of.
How many units are you talking about?
So this is just the resolution to talk about the, talk about to initiate the annexation process. So we've continued to work with the applicant to, I think, get that narrowed down.
Well, I don't know. I just think we're adding more stuff on Clovercroft Road and it's.
Could the applicants come up to while they're here?
Sure, we would invite the applicants, the Hutchinsons.
Because I think they would rather hear it up here and.
Sure.
Labor, I saw Mr. Hutchinson going like that. So I wanted to make sure your kid hear what was being said. You might want to give your name, too.
Kathy Hutchinson, husband Phil Hutchinson.
And my name is Greg Gamble and I've been working with the Hutchinsons on this request. And I'm happy to answer your question. We have discussed between six and fifteen homes, fifteen being the maximum amount. In your plan of services, when it talks about the number of houses, it says fifteen. We see that as the absolute, absolute maximum number.
Alden Berger.
And I might say that I've walked this property and I'm familiar with it. The Hutchinsons live there, continue to live there and hope to live there in the future. But just want to develop out some of their property to probably not take care of it all themselves for a while. But this is, we are planning on trying to put a turn lane over there by Amelia Park and I think they're, they're scheduled to do that. They're looking at milling it now. In fact, they're in the process of milling it. But one of the things I want us to be looking at, I know we have an issue with part of the road, but that section has county and then city and then county and city. It's one of those crazy things. So I still would like for us to look at annexing in some of that road over there because we're eventually going to have from Market Street, we're going to have, or from, I'm sorry, from Oxford Glen to Market Street, we're going to have city and they're going to have just a little part of county, just a little part of county. So I think we need to be talking to the county about annexing in some of that because we really don't need to own all of this and then have this little tiny piece be county because I think it's going to be very difficult for us maintaining our road over there and everything.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to seven.
All right, thank you.
Consideration ordinance twenty seventeen dash forty-nine to be entitled ordinance to amend chapter three of the zoning order city of Franklin, Tennessee to add clinic as a permitted use in the light industrial zone.
Mayor, the longest part of this ordinance was the title. It says to allow light industrial uses within, I'm sorry, clinic uses within the light industrial zone.
Any questions? I applaud the gravity of your presentation.
We have a question.
I have one question. What does that mean, clinics meaning? Can you give us a?
Sure, the, the city of Franklin zoning ordinance refers to clinics as any medical use. So anytime that you would have to go and see a medical professional, it would count as a clinic. So that could be a doctor, that could be, as we explained in the joint conceptual workshop, any kind of a prosthetic. And you know, the new quasi-medical terms that are coming out, cool sculpting and, and other things can be classified as a clinic use.
Could it also be an animal use, animal, animal, hospital, animal?
It cannot. We separate animal, animal clinics veterinarian as a separate, which is, I believe already permitted in light industrial zones.
Okay, it's already there.
Would this also include drug rehab facilities?
That is a little bit different depending on if it's an entry, in, in, I can't, I can't talk. If it's an inpatient treatment or an outpatient treatment. If it's an inpatient, it qualifies under a residential zoning. If it's an outpatient treatment, it would be a clinic.
Alden Peterson, I think I had you.
Yeah, thank you. One of the parts of the PowerPoint, I guess, it, it talks about Envision Franklin where the zoning ordinance is heading and it says industrial flex. You know, it says things like some low scale buildings, but some of these areas generate less vehicular traffic than regional commerce areas may be found among minor thoroughfares. Some of these involve extensive exterior movement of goods and trucks. And, and not that this particular thing would, but I, I was, I, I was just noticing where it says where the zoning ordinance is heading, you know, so what, what's, what's the context there?
The current zoning ordinance defines light industrial as a true what people have in their minds as a, as an industrial zone. Envision Franklin and what we're seeing industrial zones actually used for in Franklin qualifies more, it's more of a, it's lighter on the manufacturing and very little industrial at all that's left in the city. It's more light manufacturing and heading definitely more towards office. In that same presentation, it talked about the Dover Center.
Indeed.
Which is classified under the light industrial zone. But I, I'd have problems finding any kind of industrial use within that building.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Okay, item eight, consideration resolution to authorize the city of Franklin to submit an application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the FY two thousand eighteen transportation alternatives program.
This may seem a little bit out of order in terms of our timing. We have actually already submitted this grant application under the authority you grant to the city administrator to pursue a grant. But there are sometimes approvals or signatures they need for the mayor to make on, on these sorts of applications and process. So the resolution before you would help you speak as a board and allow the mayor to sign on your behalf if there's further work that we need to do in pursuing the grant. So it's already in, in the works. We were made aware by, by T-Dot about this opportunity and encouraged to apply. I'll let Paul kind of talk through some of the, the specifics. But we did a public meeting about a week and a half or so ago and very high number of positive comments from the public about supporting this connection in this area. So Paul?
So we pulled this application together really quickly once we were notified about it. And basically it connects the Chestnut Bend HOA trail system there over to Harlinsdale. When it's said and done, it'll provide connectivity to the Williamson County Rec Center, Franklin High School, Chestnut Bend, Bicentennial Park, Hillsborough Road and the park at Harlinsdale Farm. Seems like it's a great project. It's in both the parks master plan and the comprehensive transportation network plan. The estimated cost of construction is around two point eight nine million dollars. The city would be responsible for twenty percent of that non-federal funded portion of it. The max grant application for this type of grant, a tap grant, is typically around a million dollars. In addition, we'd be responsible for the engineering design and right away expenditures, which there's very little right away acquisition needed. But it's a, it's a great transportation connection in the downtown area to provide connectivity to the park. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And we will continue to pursue some funding opportunities and partnership opportunities. This has been a, a project that's caught the eye of Friends of Franklin Parks, the connectivity group that's been working, that includes a number of other community members. So their city role, there may be some, this grant opportunity and there may be some other partnerships that help us deliver on the project. And it, it does build off of the existing trail network that's in the Chestnut Bend neighborhood, but also allows us to use some city property and connect into the park at Harlinsdale as well.
Alden Berger.
So is this grant being applied for through the city or through Friends of Franklin Parks?
It goes through the city.
The cities.
It is, okay. So we're, we're actually in partnership and doing that through the city, okay. Just wanted to know how that was being held. Also with the property, with the fifty-four acres over there that the golf course is going to be utilizing, how does that play into that? Can they be a part of this to make sure, because you're doing the trail system right there and they're going to do a trailhead and a trail systems. Can you just, Tori, maybe be talking to them about that? Because does it play into this at all or can it be? Because if they're going to build a trailhead and a trail, they all should be coordinated too. So that might bring it through.
And that's something we're continuing to talk about in terms of how it connects into Harlinsdale more and how that, I mean.
And then comes back out and goes over to the rec center.
Yeah.
Yeah, so make sure you're talking to them. I thought, Tori, maybe you could meet with them because I, I think that we don't want to leave that element out because that, that was a connection that you want to make sure that happens.
The specific grant is Chestnut Bend.
This is for that specific.
And the, okay.
That would be a separate.
All right, so that's.
But some future tap grant.
But I just want to throw that out there so you don't forget that.
Okay.
Okay.
One very small thing. There are still two signs up that say public meeting on September.
Oh, really?
Because I saw the public meeting. I thought, what is this? And then I looked at the second one and it said.
Eric says, please.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll get those down.
Thank you.
Okay, good project.
Probably support it. If only your word, Alderman, was doing something for you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to Hunter's Bend Elementary Safe Routes to School Project.
We're going to provide you with an update. This has been a, a long-term project with, with federal grant dollars and we continue to work through some other aspects of the project. So Paul, kind of walk that through with you and tell you where we are.
We'll pull up some pictures here. So the attention of a safe routes to school type grant is typically that feds pay for a hundred percent of the construction. What happened with this project is during the initial scoping of the project, we had planned to do improvements to the tunnels and lighting. When we submitted that application or awarded it, we were very excited. We moved forward with the project. One of the big challenges we ran into was during the design review, T-Dot came in and said, you have to upgrade everything to be ADA compliant from this point all the way to the school system. So at that point is when our scope significantly grew. And so we bid the project out in December of two thousand sixteen. Jared Builders was a low bidder at three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. We had a few cost overruns. We, we eventually went back to T-Dot and asked for additional funding. They were able to grant us an additional two hundred thousand dollars of federal funds. Towards the end of the project, we ran into, I guess, three problems. One being a pretty big problem that led us to say, we need to hold off and basically do some additional design and then go back to the board to seek their guidance on how they want to proceed with the project. And so these pictures, we're going to walk you through them right now. And I'll point at this screen so that everyone can see. So one, one concern is, I guess, the slope and the maintenance associated with, with the tunnels. You can see right here, this is about a one-to-one slope. Our intentions had been to simply mat it and plant native vegetation on it so that it's, 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 it would be very painful to mow or maintain long term. So the best solution we could come up with was to essentially just mat it and plant native vegetation and grasses that would help stabilize it long term. It still would require some maintenance. That was a concern that we have heard. That isn't exactly what stopped the project, but that was one of the concerns. So we'll move to the next slide. You can see on the, and this is on the west side of Hillsborough Road, I'm sorry. You can see you had the same problem on the west side of Hillsborough Road here on this side of the, the end wall. And we'll go to the next slide. It's just another, another picture of the same problem. So one of the options, we're, we're really looking at three options here. We, we, we did a stone veneer on the tunnel surround and the walls really to match the aesthetics of what was out there today. We didn't come up with that. We simply tried to match what was on the tunnels. And so one of the options is essentially to take this end wall. We would have to remove this wall and extend the retaining wall over here to make it easier for the HOA to maintain long term. And we would do the same thing on this side of the tunnel. If we go to the next, next picture. The, the real problem that we ran into that made us stop and, and say, we need to go back to the board to seek their direction on it was as we were trying to make this trail ADA compliant, which happened during the last, the middle to T-Dot, it was missed the fact that we were, we had the potential to undermine this wall. And so we, when we saw them digging this deep next to that existing retaining wall, we told them they had to stop until we came up with a better plan. And so our, our plan right now is we have three options for y'all to consider. Some obviously are more expensive than the others. Um, some obviously are more expensive than the others. Option number one is essentially on the tunnel surrounds, we could mat it and plant native vegetation. Uh, on this retaining wall here, what we had proposed to do was you could, uh, slope pave. Slope pave isn't exactly the most aesthetic thing in the world. It's essentially what you see underneath a bridge, uh, where it's concrete underneath the bridge. You're just basically pouring concrete at a forty-five degree angle. It will stabilize it, and we can finalize the trail. Uh, estimated cost to do those improvements would be around forty thousand dollars. Uh, you know, that's, that's what we had come up with at a staff level to reduce the cost down as much as we possibly can. The two other options would essentially be extending retaining walls, a very expensive option, difficult to construct, given the limited access. You could do a, uh, form liner wall. Uh, estimated cost to do some type of a form liner wall would be around, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars of additional cost of the project. It's a big ticket item. We'd have to remove a portion of the existing walls, and then we pour a form liner. I struggle at recommending that because the form liner will not recommend the stone, or will not match the stone veneer that's been placed on the walls out there today. So it'd basically be two different types of walls right next together, and it probably wouldn't be overly aesthetically pleasing. The last option is to, is to extend the walls with the exact same type of facade that you have on it today. Uh, estimated cost for that's around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we're in the process of trying to negotiate these with the contractor today. Uh, we feel that they're probably about ten percent higher than what they should be, based on looking at historical average costs. And so we're attempting to reduce those down, uh, to bring forward a change order, uh, to see how the board wants to proceed. Um, so those are, those are really the three options. We're just seeking your guidance on how you want to proceed. Uh, we, we tried to break it down on the memo to show really what the city's out-of-pocket costs would be. The grant only covers so much of this project. Um, and so the, the cheaper option or the slope paving option, uh, where we mat the sides of the wall, our cost out-of-pocket overall for the entire project's around a hundred and forty thousand. Uh, when you start talking about the form liner wall or the natural stone veneered wall, uh, our proj- our cost approaches three hundred twenty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But, but the new costs or additional costs are really that middle band on that? You've really already committed the other component, so you're looking at forty to three hundred and forty thousand, forty-seven thousand.
What's the total, okay, the three options are, okay. Well, I, I've been down there many times. The, the, the problem that we're having in the, in this photo that's up is it's, it's real, but the, to me, the, the thing that, if it's not done correctly, would cast a significant ongoing burden off onto the private property owners is either side of the tunnel. The pictures don't do it justice. If you've been down there, it's, it's fifteen feet high, and it's a straight cliff. And I don't know how you grow anything there, ever. Uh, so, uh, something's got to be done there. Here, where, in this photo, um, you know, that's, that's tricky, but that's, that's not to me as, I mean, it's real, but it's not to me as, as a non-engineer, it's not as obvious to me why this is the big problem, but I believe what you say. But we, the, the, the two, the two things on either side of that tunnel opening are, I've got a video. I took a rock and threw it to the top of that hill, and it ran down. And it's not just that you probably couldn't grow anything or maintain anything, it's that when it comes down, it's going to run right into that drain that you can see, that you can almost see in this picture. And that was part of the problem that we were remedying was a, a pump and a drain that, that would fail at the worst times, leaving the tunnel flooded.
Paul, have you got somewhere that we have this kind of slope that you put vegetation in and it's holding? Is there any other place that you can think of that?
Not off the top of my head. I mean, generally, we try to leave it at a three-to-one slope, which is more maintainable. Um, I know, I know it can be done with the right vegetation. It'll be difficult to get it established, but once established, it'll work. It's just going to require someone to go in there and maintain it two, three times a year, cutting the grasses back, weeding, et cetera. The, the tough part will be getting stabilized.
It would be just.
Yeah, we'd plant something that's more annual maintenance. And they do this a lot on stream banks, um, for stream bank restoration.
Because if we put any kind of solid in there, it's going to increase the water flow, and will get more water into the drain for the tunnel, right?
Well, if we build a vertical wall, it won't.
Okay.
And that's what we're proposing, to build a vertical wall, which ideally would be the better solution. Um, we were trying to, I guess our designer was trying to keep the cost down of the project, uh, and did not extend the wall. And that was the response we got from them is why that decision was made to try to plant it with the natural vegetation.
Okay, so if we put the vertical wall right there, but then the other issue is the undercutting on this existing wall.
Yeah, and what you can do there is you either slope pave it, or we got to extend another wall just below this existing wall.
So to do the vertical wall and the slope paving is that first option that you were talking about?
Uh, the first option is, uh, forty thousand dollars to do the slope paving, and then mat and plant native vegetation along the head wall.
So that takes care of this problem and the other picture?
Takes care of this one and the other one. Forty grand, yep.
So what if you put the vertical wall in adjacent to the tunnel? How much more is that going to cost?
I guess I, with the slope paving, you mean?
Yes.
Uh, I didn't have it broken out that way. We can definitely look at that option and bring that option back. I'd have to go back and see the different line items.
Let me ask a question. When this, when this project began, on either side of that tunnel opening were enormous boulders. I mean, boulders, you, you, you had to have had a backhoe, heavy machinery to get out. And those seemed to be okay. They, uh, is there any reason we can't stack them back up there and call it a day?
They've been, they've been hauled off. We'd have to get.
Well, we can get rocks.
Yeah.
Can we put more rocks, rip rapp?
Why would they haul off?
And that was part of the problem with some of the rock, kids were getting up there and throwing some of the little rocks down and, uh.
What about rocks with that, like, that's like what they do at Mont Eagle, where it's got like a covering that keeps them in there?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at an option like that.
You know, Mount Rees.
I just, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, like a chicken wire kind of covering?
Well, the, 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 the problem, the, the rocks that I'm talking about are boulders. They were stacked. This was not something a kid could pick up and throw. And for that matter, there's, there's countless rocks. If you, if you're just a, a, a delinquent and you want to throw rocks, there's billions of rocks in this area. There's a, for goodness sake, there's a gravel road fifty yards, thirty yards up that hill. You could go get all the rocks you want. I'm just looking at something that will prevent a maintenance problem and prevent an erosion problem that doesn't necessarily have to cost three hundred thousand dollars.
But you could also always plant kudzu.
I was just thinking.
Oh, no, that's illegal. No, really, I was thinking.
I think it's illegal.
The wall's the best option to totally prevent it, honestly.
Is, is there no more going back to T-Dot? No more money?
No.
I mean, they've given us an additional two hundred.
They've given us an additional two hundred.
From a funding source standpoint, one of the thoughts I had on this was to look at maybe potentially tapping the county, uh, facilities dollars, because we've tapped that in infrastructure in and around schools. This obviously is a pathway that goes to a school.
That's true.
So, um, whatever option you choose, that's, that's probably where I'd get the additional dollars. I think that makes sense. Um, we need to do a budget amendment for that, but I, I, that's probably your best source at this point.
So, to be clear, new money needed to, if, if I told you, "Do this, do this right," like, make this right, what's the new money that you would need?
Three hundred and forty-seven thousand with the stone veneer.
And how does, I mean?
How much did it start off?
That's doubling the cost of this project, and I'm just curious how we wound up with this.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
The big, the big problem was when T-Dot told us to extend the ADA trail all the way to the school.
Yeah.
Our designer and city staff, it had a big change on the project, and nobody identified, and you can't tell by looking at the T-Dot plans. Nobody identified that it was going to undermine this wall as much as it did. It just didn't get identified, unfortunately.
The wall or the, or the dirt, the slope there?
The, this wall right here. This is, this is one of the big costs.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the problem?
That is, that is one of the big problems, yes.
Cause that wall's been there thirty, twenty-five years.
Yeah, well, we, we cut four feet beside it, and that's, that was missed, honestly. Had we bid the project again, that wall would have been in there, and you would have generally paid this same cost.
Well, that's a playground for, for kinder care.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have to shore that up.
Yes.
Great.
So we're in for.
Forty. Isn't that what you said, forty?
Slow paving is forty thousand, yeah. I don't have the different wall segments broken out, but we can do that and bring that back.
But does the three fifty include the slope pave?
The three fifty would just be walls everywhere, no slope paving.
So it would take care of this problem?
Take care of this problem as well.
Short wall or tall wall?
Uh, some of them will be pretty tall. Right there at the head wall, they'll be about.
I'm talking like in this picture.
No, it'd be small. It'd just go up enough to get over the existing foundation and stabilize it.
Well, I, I, I have no hesitation to recommend that you do it correctly, because it's, it's not fair. And I, I'm glad that we've done the project. It's unfortunate that, um, that this problem wasn't foreseen. Uh, we probably paid a lot of money to someone whose job it was to foresee it and prevent it, or come to us and, and budget for it, but here we are. Um, and, you know, I get that if we were able to just go in there with crush and run and asphalt and not worry about it, it'd be a lot cheaper, but we don't have that choice either, because we took the money with the, you know, with the ADA obligation. And at the end of the day, it's going to be a great project, but it's, uh, it's been stalled out for two months. It was a month overdue at that point, and I'm not fussing at anyone. I'm just, I just want the board to understand. This project was author, this, they were given the go in May. It was a ninety-day project. Ninety days later, it was thirty days from done if we hadn't run into this, at least.
Right.
So, I mean, this project was, this project was supposed to be completely done and over with by the time school opened, and by the time school opened, it looked like that, and it's looked like that since August. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, it's time for us to get this done and get it right, and that's my position.
And we're looking at safe routes. I mean, that's, that's pretty important.
There's two thousand two hundred homes on either side of this tunnel, and every kid that lives on the other side of that road with the small, with a small segment behind Publix, um, every kid that lives on the other side of that road goes to Hunter's Bend. And if you go over there in the morning, you'll see, if you go over there right now, there's people jogging. And if you go over there in the morning and the afternoon, you'll see kids on bikes going through that tunnel. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not an amenity. It's a transportation issue.
Alderman Barnhill.
If we'd recognized it upfront, we would have had the cost that we're being presented now.
Yes.
So.
It might have been slightly less.
Might have been slightly less. So, I don't see that it's, uh, I don't see that it's a big mistake on our part or anybody else's.
It's bigger scope.
It's a bigger. Bigger scope, and if we'd have recognized it, we would have bid the project, and it would have come in at the cost that's, yeah, plus the cost that you're putting in now. So, I don't see that that's, that's not too worrisome to me.
Yeah, just go ahead. You said you had some, perhaps, a money of funding, so it's from.
And, and the school, and the, we've counted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've done infrastructure around schools. It's, it's been our general use of those dollars. This would be consistent with that.
County school?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got our recommendation.
Got some directions there, so we'll go on to item ten, which is a consideration resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-eight. Resolution authorizing the city administrator to terminate the off-street parking lease agreement. City of Franklin contract twenty thirteen dash zero oh, I'm sorry, zero one oh four with John M. Green for the parking area located behind one eighteen Fourth Avenue North. I think Planning wrote that.
Several, several years ago, uh, we entered into an agreement with, uh,
No picture.
With, uh, Mr. Green.
This is just dark.
And essentially, the, the nature of the deal was, we would do resurfacing of this parking, this surface parking. In exchange for that work, uh, it would be made available for public parking, free public parking. Uh, and it had provided for in the agreement, the opportunity for, uh, Mr. Green to, or the owner, Mr. Green, to, um, to basically reimburse us for the prorated cost of that improvement and take control of that parking. He's exercised that right. Uh, this essentially brings closure to that agreement. But what he's done is, is that I want to take control of that, make that private parking and control that on, on his property, and I'm, I, I will write you the check back for the prorated amount. I think it's fifty-six hundred dollars, something in that range, uh, that he has, he has now paid us for, and this would close out that agreement, and, and these tw- it's twenty-one parking spaces would become, um, private spaces.
Just to be clear, we have paid, we've had a long-term lease with Mr. Green and others.
Yes.
I, I've, I've seen articles. I just want, I want the public watching to be clear. The City of Franklin has, for a long time, rented parking places in downtown Franklin from the owners, and then turned them over for free parking because the City of Franklin paid the rent.
Basically, our, our payment in this case was more the resurfacing and some work on the lots.
We could have just given them a check and had them do it, but in any event, we made contributions and had arrangements that secured free parking throughout downtown Franklin.
Correct.
For years.
Yes.
Hun- dozens or hundreds of spaces.
Yeah, this, and in particular.
Well, this one is a couple of dozen, but total is dozens.
The Fourth Avenue Church of Christ is another example.
Years and years and years. Now, to be clear, what's happened is some of those private owners have decided that they would rather have private arrangements with vendors that charge. We can't stop them from doing that. That's their private property, and that's their prerogative.
Exactly.
Okay.
The, the only regulatory control we have is the signage, because it's in the historic district.
Okay.
But other than that, it is their, their private property, and they're exercising their rights in terms of the arrangements we'd made to.
Along the way, the City of Franklin has built two parking garages for which no fee is charged unless you break the rules.
Exactly.
Back in.
Back in or stay over, or stay too long, but, so there's hundreds, there are hundreds of parking spaces that the City of Franklin built in garages that we own and still maintain as.
Well over six hundred spaces are in structure.
Alderman Burger.
So there, there's your, there's your piece of knowledge you can take away from today.
Yep, and I want to, uh, reiterate what Dana said, that, um, we're, the visitors and the residents will still have parking, and they can choose to park in our free garages if available or on the streets, or they can choose to park in the spaces that they would pay for. And that parking is not going away. They're still providing the parking for the people.
Till we get that parking.
Which we need.
That is, I have Alderman Barnhill.
We should have another agreement from someone else similar to this?
There's a similar discussion going on with the Church of Christ, Fourth Avenue Church of Christ. That's not been finalized yet, but we've been approached and looking at what that, calculating what that number is, and, uh, at least, my read would be, I would expect a similar, uh, transaction to take place with them at some point.
Because we resurfaced those parking lots after two thousand seven.
Yes.
And I, for forty of its worth, and I remember doing that, and questioned the contract and some of the agreements they were in.
Okay. Alderman Peterson.
Just a very small, uh, comment. At one point, I don't know about the John Green property, but the other part of that parking lot there, you had to buy some kind of, uh, permit and pass. That's right. Uh, you know, I don't know how many years ago that was. That, that's up to my husband's old office building, and they, they had a little place, you know, right behind the building, but the, even the people that worked for them, if they wanted to park there, had to, had to pay to do that. It was, I don't know how mu- I have no idea how much money it was.
Alderman.
Just to add on to Dana, it's also important to know that the same company has pursued all of these private owners, and in my knowledge, they were sought out, not the other way around. So.
And the enforcement of parking there will then be the responsibility of the vendor.
Exactly.
Not the city, yep.
Yep.
Good point.
Okay, item eleven, consideration resolution twenty seventeen dash seventy-six. Resolution approving the master plan summary report for the Franklin Special School District.
I was short there, wasn't I?
I appreciate those shorter captions. You definitely get a star tonight.
This is what we've been working on for a while, uh, and you all have been briefed a couple times on this, but we're at the final stage in terms of the, the plan, uh, in terms of our partnership with Franklin Special School District at, at four different school campuses, and I'll let Lisa and Mary take you through it.
Sure, and Mary's, she'll join us here in a second. She's kind of setting up the boards right quick. Uh, but you have it in your pack, uh, Mary's with Barge Wagner, Sumner and Cannon, and it's, this has been a very successful project with Franklin Special School District, and we've been, um, excited to go through that. I would want, I would like to bring to your attention while she's setting up, because she will go. I would want, I would like to bring to your attention while she's setting up, because she will go over the summary report with you briefly. There is a resolution before you, it's in draft form and it says it's in draft form, there's a couple of text amendments that will change that. That law has brought to our attention, so we'll finalize that as well as making the summary agreement and exhibit once it comes before you in November for final approval. But our next steps in the process will be is to go before the Franklin Special School District Board, Dr. Snowden and his team, to ask for approval of the summary plan. And then we'll sit down together and decide on what is the best project to move forth as one of the first low-hanging fruit. And so we're excited to have that conversation. And most likely a memorandum of understanding between the two of a partnership will come from that as, as we look to fund it jointly as well. So Mary is, is way down there. But that way you can, I'm going to turn it over to you and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you Lisa Clayton, I appreciate it, and thank you for your time. I'll just go through this pretty quickly, you may remember, we were here back in July, I believe, with the draft plan. Not a lot has changed since then, we did have a public meeting though and incorporated a couple of changes well as find out what is the, you know, first priority Lisa spoke about. So I'll just go through the plans, feel indulged me, so I will start with this one, Highway ninety-six here. This is the Freedom Intermediate, and this is Johnson Elementary, you're familiar with, I believe it's on the screen as well. Not, we're a little constrained on these sites here for improvements, but I'll start with Johnson Elementary. So on this side, I believe last time we talked about some of the trees surrounding this potential field space here, so certainly working with those and making sure those stay in. And then, and really it's just this one improvement. But then kind of a shared use here, the multipurpose fields. Now, what we heard from the public meeting is that's what really people are looking for, improvements to the multipurpose fields. And so we've shown a number of those and arrange them in such a way that you could get in more than what currently it's just open lawn area now that's being paved. And also on this side, I will mention that the Franklin Special Schools is already underway with some improvements. So they're making improvements to the track here that's existing as well as the bleachers. They've also done a lot of improvements with the playgrounds as well. Now, one thing that we'd recommend is that utilizing some of the staff knowledge, I know that they've got a playground, safety inspector, you know, to, to utilize those resources, that's something that the Franklin Special Schools may not have access to. So, you know, that partnership is a great opportunity to bring the two groups together. And, and so I think that basically covers it now. I would say, you know, if you're going to just do one of them, certainly what we heard again from the public meeting is that people are looking for the multipurpose field. So perhaps, you know, starting with at least one toward the back and, and here at Johnson Elementary. And then, but when you do get them all, or if you could do it all at once, certainly including a restroom concession building. That was something that we had heard ranked high because when the school is closed in the weekend for an event or something like that, that's very difficult. There is one that's existing here by the football field, but it gets closed off. So having this other one, and then we've also talked about, I mean, all the details from trash pickup and things like that that would be housed in that and it could roll out and be picked up conveniently, but, you know, not sightly so it's out of the way, things like that. Those, those details need to be incorporated. So I'll move on now to Poplar Grove and the Freedom Mill site. So again, here's Highway ninety-six coming through here, and you can see the outline of the property in red. On this site, again, the highest ranking, what we heard from the, the people who attended the public meeting was that they're looking for the, the multipurpose fields again, so that would be our, you know, suggested phase one. But there's also a lot of connectivity that could be included, possibly sidewalks from this side across. I know the school's already put in one here, which is really great, and that will connect to some new development that's happening, so that's exciting. Then there was a tie on the tennis courts and the baseball softball fields. So that's going to be a tough decision on what goes first. So I, I will say it's interesting, you know, at Jim Warren, there's some tennis courts over there now that if they potentially could move over here, that would free a, free up space there, and there's kind of a domino. But then also, you know, we can see reasons why you may want to move forward on the baseball because there's some drainage issues that could be addressed now. It's, the baseball field here would stay in its current location, but if that could be improved. And then also we're recommending a restroom building with that, so it sort of ties together the softball and baseball. And then a restroom building there where the tennis court area is. So I just, we want to open it up for discussion and see what questions you all have.
Alden Blanton.
I don't know how final this draft is, and I'm not saying I have the perfect idea, but in CIC we were talking about on the Freedom, I got to get my school straight, Freedom Intermediate. The opportunity to maybe put a walking trail around the multipurpose because as parents are there, it gives them another way to not only see their children do what they're doing, but also get in some steps themselves. I don't know what the square foot or if that's a possibility, but I kind of was like, oh, it didn't make it. So, I mean, I would love for us to entertain that idea because I think it would bring another entire use to those fields for parents to be able to walk around it.
And I think that could be at least accommodated, maybe we can, but we'll look at that, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, especially during design, that's when you get into the details.
I just didn't know, so I just want to make sure.
Making sure that it's connected, absolutely. No problem.
How much are we into the detail of what this is going to cost and the cost sharing between the two entities?
Well, you have within the summary plan, you have a preliminary budget, but I think it really comes down, we have not had the discussion with Franklin Special School District of the project in which they want to do first, as well as.
We should probably have a joint board meeting.
That would be a wonderful idea, should.
Yeah, because you're, you're running back and forth between, and I shouldn't say that, that's probably not the right way to put it. You're running back and forth for them to us, to them to us.
Well, I think more of this phase is just establishing that relationship and establishing the, the plan itself. I think if you would love to do that, that would be the city administrator's responsibility to schedule that. That would be a wonderful meeting. But, but I think then we understand what their budget is and, and you really take a look at what a capital campaign could be as far as what we consider what a CIP would be. But we have not discussed how much they would bring to the table nor would we. But I do think the first project, even though we've, we've tried to listen to the school system and listen to the principals and listen to the parents and the PTA, it does have to be something in which would impact for us. There's an impact immediately for the park system as well as the school system. And, and that's to where it is a win-win right out, out of the gate.
Other comments, questions?
Keep moving forward.
Good one.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
Would these spills be lighted?
Yes.
And my other question was, would there be adequate protection for those neighborhoods adjacent to those since that's something new?
Absolutely, absolutely. There's technology today that we have within our park systems and our baseball fields that you basically are one foot candle away from the property line. And so with technology, you can provide that to where.
You can do the lighting where it doesn't.
The lighting, you wouldn't, you can be fifteen yards away and, and it would be basically shadows versus full lighting of a spill that you used to have.
Alden Martin.
Do you know who the director, not Dr. Snowden, but who in the system is comparable to you?
In the, in the school system itself, there's not one person, they do not have just an athletic director. Basically you have, they almost have a board with all of their athletics, and so.
You've got facilities.
And you've got facilities. There are, there are different mix within the school system.
When, when we talk about, when you said we need to have something that's going to immediately affect the city and immediately affect the school system, then it seems to me before all of us get together and start throwing out stuff, you, that you could meet with that particular group and you all decide what would be most beneficial to the city and the, and the school system. Then you can present that to us.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of where we would want to go is, is have, see where there's some common interest about what the priorities are and then bring that back to the boards, whether that's a joint meeting where we look at what those priorities are or however we do that. And, and that probably includes some discussion around funding strategies, et cetera. So I think we look at those together in terms of priorities, what has the most impact, what could be funded most easily or quickly, and we go forward from there.
Okay, seat seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.